Closed and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters.
So move, second. Yes ma'am. Thank you ma'am. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Appreciate you coming out. We're running a few minutes behind. We're gonna try not to be here as long as we were previous month. Everyone please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence. Here we go. I think everybody got those signed. All righty, Dr. Hackney if you would, we're gonna move on with our recognitions.
Can you hear me? Good evening. Members of the board, if you remember, a few weeks ago, you all enthusiastically signed the Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll Proclamation. We have a new opportunity through the Virginia School Board Association to honor members of our business community who have been supportive, extra supportive to our school system. And I can say from my experience in another district, the Business Education Partnership that we have in Mecklenburg is absolutely unprecedented throughout the state. We could probably honor a kajillion of these wonderful representative businesses in our community. However, we are allowed to honor three, and we identified three that have been extremely consistent in their support of our school division. So I want to begin this recognition by briefly reading through the proclamation, the resolution that you all have signed, and then we will very briefly honor three representatives of three very active and supportive businesses in our community. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, therefore be it resolved that the Mecklenburg County Public School Board names Vets, V E T S Inc., Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative, and B G F Industries to the 2014 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And as you all know, each of you signed this resolution. We asked Gina Laramore from our Business Education Partnership to help us with some specifics in honoring these three businesses, and she was very, very quick to compliment each of the three that we have nominated and who have been recognized. Ms. Laramore shared that since the inception of our Business Education Partnership, which was founded in 1997, B G F and Mecklenburg Electric have been partners with our school division and with the Business Education Partnership. Vets Incorporated is a new business sponsor, but since becoming a partner, they have stepped up and gone above and beyond what is what we've asked of them. All three of these businesses have consistently and continually supported the schools in many endeavors, including the Business Education Partnership fundraisers for scholarships and welcoming the new teachers to Mecklenburg County each year. Our Business Education Partnership and the schools are extremely fortunate to have such prestigious and caring business sponsors in our community, and I know you know that. They understand and demonstrate that they believe in how important it is for the business community to partner with the schools to ensure the students get the best education possible and provide viable citizens back to our community. Just briefly, I want to read to you the letter that was sent to each of these business representatives on April 2nd. Dear Representative, your local school board, Mecklenburg County, has submitted your name to the Virginia School Boards Association in recognition of your support for local public board, school board work and for the public schools in your community. We want to thank you personally for your commitment to the students in your school division. Your work has aided in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. A commendation certificate, which we have to present tonight, has been sent to your local school boards so that they can recognize you publicly in support of your business at our local school board meeting. On behalf of the association, we thank you for building better opportunities for the children in the Commonwealth and in the Mecklenburg County Public School System. Signed, Gina Patterson, Executive Director of the School Boards Association. We'd like to begin by recognizing Mr. Marion, who is representing B G F. Mr. Marion, would you come forward? As a supporter of the new teacher welcome, Mr. Marion with B G F Industries knows what it is like to be fresh out of college, I love this story, and come to a new area not knowing anyone. One year, there was a new teacher to the area that came straight out of college, had nowhere to stay, and her clothes packed in her car. Mr. Marion and the people at her table at the new teacher orientation put together money and actually found her temporary, a temporary place to stay. This is just one of many examples of the support that B G F has, has provided us, and so in honor of your help to our school division, we thank you very much and recognize your partnership. Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody with Vets Incorporated. As a supporter of Mecklenburg County Public Schools, Mr. Moody, representing Vets Incorporated, supports the Senior Awards Banquet. And today, and this is extremely timely, Mr. Moody volunteered his time to sit on a presentation of learning panel at Bluestone Middle School, just one example of their support to our school division and the work that we're doing on project-based learning and formal presentations of learning with our students. So thank you, Mr. Moody, on behalf of Vets Incorporated. Appreciate your support. And finally, Mr. Lipscomb, David Lipscomb, representing Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative. As most of you know, Mecklenburg Electric has been a longtime supporter of our school division. At Chase City Elementary, and the A R program holds a picnic every year for students that meet personal goals. Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative also is a sponsor, is a sponsor, regular sponsor of this event at the Chase City site. And we're especially pleased to announce that on June 6th of this year, our teachers will enjoy a last-day guest speaker and a luncheon hosted, all 459 of them hosted by Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative. So we thank you very much for your continued support of our school. At this time, we would like to recognize our outgoing student liaisons. Cameron and Devon, why don't you come on down? Okay, I won't. Enough of that at the senior banquet. I am, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to do this because I am still relatively new to my position, and this is my first time experiencing student representatives to the school board. And it has been an absolute delight as sort of a newcomer to the organization, returning to the organization, to see these fine young, fine young man and, and young lady represent our school district and in particular their representative student bodies so professionally and insightfully. I have just, it's been a joy to get to know them, and I know I speak for the entire school board. For me, they have set the standard very high, and I'm sure the students to follow are gonna do a good job, but they will always be the standard for me because this is my first opportunity, and so they're especially special to us. And so I know that I, you all share our sentiments when we thank you from the bottom of our heart for all your hard work, all the countless hours that you have spent, all the time you've spent making sure that you're representing the, the needs and the voice of the students. It's a very important job, and I know that you've taken that very, very seriously. It has been a true pleasure to work with you all this, this year, and we're gonna miss you, but we know that you're going on to do great and wonderful things. Come back and visit school board meetings. I'm sure you'll enjoy that. And we have just a small token of our appreciation to both of you, a card to tell you how much we love you and appreciate you, and a small token that we hope that will help you a little bit as you go to college and take care of some of those expenses. You're welcome. Good luck to you. And at this time, you all may introduce our, our new liaisons who will begin at the August board meeting.
At this time, will Mrs. Macy Mills please come forward?
Chris Wilson, will you please come forward as well?
Representing Bluestone High School for the 2014-2015 school year is Mrs. Macy Mills. Mrs. Macy Mills is a rising senior at Bluestone High School and is the daughter of Mr. Mike and Ms. Christie Mills. Throughout her high school career, she has maintained honor roll and serves as the Vice President of the Future Business Leaders of America, member of the Virginia State Golf Association, and Secretary of FFA and DECA. She's also a member of the Beta Club Golf Team and the Mecklenburg Junior Women's Association. Upon graduation from high school, Macy plans to attend a four-year university majoring in Forensic Science, aspiring to become a criminal investigator. In her spare time, she enjoys reading, traveling, playing golf, and involving herself in community service projects. I'm proud and pleased to announce and welcome Macy Mills as our 2014 student liaison representing Bluestone High School. We also got the notice. And I'm gonna read it. School Board 101, confetti, to celebrate being the new student liaison. Extra gum, to give you extra motivation to learn something from this experience. Paper clips, to hold things together when it gets out of control. Highlighters, to highlight your many talents and skills needed for this position. Balloons, to remind yourself to never blow when things do not go as planned. Smarties, to remind you that you're smart and have what it takes to do this. Irracious, to remind you that yesterday is gone and today is a new day. And last but not least, Skittles, to remind you that your fut- future is as colorful as a rainbow. Thank you.
Tonight, I'm introducing the new student liaison for Parkview High School, Chris Wilson. Chris is truly a great person on the inside and out. He is very motivated, well-knowledge, and optimistic. Chris has plans to later on go to V M I and feels that this position will help him tremendously in his growth as an individual. Chris is the newly-elected president of SGA, volunteer firefighter at Buckhorn, church member, FBLA Golf, Drama Club, Forensics, FFA, and YOVOSO member. Although I'm truly upset that tonight is my last meeting, I know that Chris will do a tremendous job, and I'm so very proud of you. Congratulations.
And on behalf of the board, student liaisons, liaisons, Mr. Moody and Ms. Hawkins, I'd just like to thank you all for y'all's participation and y'all's input. It's been valuable, and we, we have utilized it to the best of our ability from a student's, student's perspective, and that's always gives us a perspective we don't get to see, but we do appreciate it, and we wish y'all much, much success. And to Ms. Mills and Mr. Wilson, we look forward to seeing y'all in August, and look forward to working with you all also. Is that all your recognitions? We're gonna move on to superintendent's reporting information items, our Bluestone Middle School art project.
Members of the board, students in Mr. Muller's 6th grade art class created the Four Seasons mosaic during the 2012-13 school year that you see behind me. After some thought, Mr. Muller and his students thought it would be a good idea to place the mosaic where people could enjoy it, so they have hung it here in the school board building. For the project, students were put in groups according to the season in which they were born and assigned the task of designing the look of that season. Students had to brainstorm colors and symbols that would best represent their season. They learned, well, I'm gonna let you, let them tell you what they learned. Not only did Mr. Muller's students learn a lot about making a mosaic, they learned to all work together to create a beautiful and unique piece of art that can be enjoyed for years to come. Here to present and explain their project are Samantha Watkins, Anaya Daniel, Nikita Jennings, and Sean Jones. Okay, Nikita's not here.
All right. Nikita wasn't able to make it, so today I'm gonna be presenting her part. Good evening, my name is Anaya. The theme we decided on for the mosaic, for the mosaic project was the Four Seasons. First, we had to work together to design it, then we had to split up into groups according to our birthdays. We could team many times to come up with our final ideas.
Hi, my name is Samantha Watkins. We rolled clay into slabs, then cut the slabs into squares and used cookie cutters to cut the shapes for the seasons. After the clay dries, we put them into the kiln. The clay was heated up to 2,000 degrees. We took them out, glazed them, and put them back in. While we waited, we mixed the mortar so we could spread it on the back of the clay by buttering. After the tiles were boarded, we mixed grout. We smeared grout all over the tiles. Then we used a float to even out the grout so we could see the tiles. And lastly, we used a sponge to clean off the tiles. It was a lot of work, but it was fun.
Good evening. My name is Sean Jones, I'm gonna talk about the seasons that we did in the project. Winter, we used cool colors, and we had a snowman, snowflakes, and we used tiles to make it look like the wind was blowing. Spring, we used warm colors, birds, flowers, and clover. Summer, we used a beach scene, we used different color blues for the water in the sky, seashells on the beach, and warm colors for the sun. Fall, we used earth color tones, cut out pumpkins and leaves, put, put them in swirls to make it look like the leaves were blowing.
In this project, we learned a lot. We learned how a big group can work together on one piece of art. We learned tile techniques, and we used elements of designs like lines and shades. We all really enjoyed this project. This piece of art is something that we all can go back and look at and enjoy. I hope you all enjoyed and learned from our presentation. Thank you for coming out and supporting us. We hope you enjoyed. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Mr. Gregory, Dr. Thornton, and those present tonight. We would like to introduce the Parkview and Bluestone Energy Teams. Our energy, our journey began in January when Johnson Controls came to do the project launch at each middle school. Then, we studied energy with our teachers with experiments, inquiry, and hands-on tools provided by Johnson Controls. Over the past few months, we've been working to find ways to conserve energy and save Mecklenburg County money. Our teams have been divided into three groups, water, lighting and plug-ins, and heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Each of these teams split up to audit three of our elementary schools. The lacrosse team, the Parkview team, is myself, Noah Nielsen.
Camber Graham.
Haley Richards.
Eve Palmer.
Maddie Clary.
Bethany Walton.
Christopher Clary.
And Joel Nielsen.
And this is the Bluestone group. Mohammed Ganna.
Derek Rhodes.
Larry Smith.
Kai Watkins.
Lacy Blankenship.
We conducted an energy audit in our middle schools as a training ground for elementary schools.
After conferences with our teachers, experts looking at reports, analyzing data, and reflecting on our findings, our teachers chose us to become members of the official audit team.
When we were first introduced to this project in January, it seemed like a unique and interesting opportunity to learn about energy conservation. We learned to collaborate and share ideas with peers and professional engineers to reach a final product. It was fun, and we got to participate in an authentic learning experience that has resulted in making a difference for Mecklenburg County schools.
Because of time, you may see our documentary on the Mecklenburg County Public School website.
Our energy project experience could not have been possible without the collaboration of Johnson Controls. I would like to ask Mr. Dan Knox, Engineering Manager, and Mr. Whit Blakely, the Account Executive for Johnson Controls Incorporated, to please stand.
Thank you for this awesome learning experience you, you gave to all the 6th graders at Mecklenburg County Public Schools.
We conducted data on water usage in schools. Our job was to investigate water usage and waste in the buildings.
We looked at water faucets, sinks, and toilets, and kitchen equipment. We found that some toilets were broken, sinks use more water than is needed, and some bathrooms were leaking.
We were part of the lighting and plug-in group. Our job was to count the number of lights in each school and machines and tools that use a plug-in for electrical uses. We also examined the types of bulbs used in each division to light our schools, the quality of lights, and the cost of lights. Forgetting to turn lights off and unplug outlets wastes energy.
The energy team discovered that lights and outlets were left unattended, therefore wasting a lot of energy. Smart outlets and automatic lights that turn off when no one is in the room are ways to reduce human error and reduce the amount of energy wasted. Research studies say we must have 25-foot candles of light at the work surface to have sufficient light for students to read and learn.
Our last study was to examine the heating, venting, and air conditioning in buildings. We looked at the cleanliness of vents, thermostats, boilers, and A C window units. We used the hence, we used a heat sensing thermometer to measure the temperature of pipes and of the room.
The heaters at Lacrosse Elementary were always running.
This is a waste, this is a waste of energy and a danger to students and teachers because they become superheated and can cause burns if they are touched.
First, we are going to report on water at Lacroix Elementary School. This school wastes a lot of energy when using water. To conserve water, motion-activated sensors could be added to use less water when flushing toilets. Since Lacroix Elementary School uses tank water, they can reduce the costs on the electric and the water bills if these changes are made.
Adding sensors to the drinking fountains will drive the cost down too.
I learned that people waste a lot of water. Adding aerators to the sinks and, to the sinks in the bathrooms could save money by distributing water over the surface area coming out of the faucet. They make it feel like you are using more water when washing your hands while you are actually using less. Next, we will talk about the H V, H V A C. If you turn off one classroom air conditioning unit for one hour per day, you might save 12% of your original energy spend. M C P S can save money by replacing air-conditioned units with all thermostats. These energy-efficient wall mounts take care of heating and cooling. We saw these in the new wing. If the old classrooms are replaced with wall ther- thermostats, energy costs go down and students and adults are more comfortable.
If Mecklenburg changes the present lighting to LED lighting, they will cost more upfront, but they will pay for themselves in the long run. They last 30 years and will reduce maintenance costs because men, men can do more useful things in our schools than going around changing light bulbs.
LED lighting typically saves 65 to 75% of the original money spent.
At Lacrosse, we found many mishaps with the air con, with the air conditioning. There were a lot of leaks that they didn't even turn off. In the lighting, there weren't, in the, in lighting, the lights weren't energy efficient in the old part of the school, and they used a lot of heat.
For the wa, for the water, some of the sinks were broken and leak, leaking. We could replace the sinks with motion sensors to limit how much water is being used and to fix any leaking pipes.
Please pay attention to their statement. Savings provided by Lacrosse Elementary School will pay for renovations at the other two schools. We can do simple things that will give a huge return, like using caulking and weathering strips on the doors, insulating the ceilings, and using LED light sensors and dimmers.
When we were in Chase City, we saw a variety of things that weren't a good source of energy.
In the old section of the building, there were many lights left on. This can be improved by using lights that have to manually, have to be manually turned on, but automatically turned off. Also in the old section, many of the bathrooms were leaky.
We also noticed that most of the printers, printers and copiers were left on, even when they aren't being used. We can fix this by using smart outlets.
You have our plan as an attachment in your board documents. If Mecklenburg County Public Schools should just implement our plan. This is a quick snapshot of the project costs, annual savings, and savings over the life of the loan.
These things that we should include, the things that we should include, installing new lights, faucets, heating, and new ventilation.
We can also place posters near light switches stating how much it costs to leave the lights on for one hour as a reminder to turn lights off.
In closing, Johnson Controls has invited all of
In closing, Johnson Controls has invited all of us to go to UVA to do a field renovation construction project. We are the first energy student auditors to work with Johnson Controls in the state of Virginia. Now, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Knox and Mr. Whit Blakely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with these fine energy auditors. And I just want to say that Johnson Controls picked a fantastic community to partner with on this effort. All the students that we worked with, the staff and teachers, really went out of their way to make this project a success. So I think we really owe them a big round of applause. We have diplomas for each, but for the sake of time, we'll give those to their respective teachers so they can hand out. But this group are certified energy auditors as far as we're concerned, so... Anything you want to add, Dan?
No, I'd like to say that I had a lot of fun. It was really a treat. We haven't set it up quite yet. Basically, we need to find out, we have to run it through the... We're trying to find a building that is being constructed to modern standards, have a good project that we can still walk kids through without...
Can I ask my question? Thank you. I have a question for the students, if you don't mind. I'm just curious to know if any of you junior energy auditors conducted an energy audit at home or questioned your parents on some of the things that you learned. In your house? Alright, smart man. I do that all the time. I'm guilty. That's awesome. I'm impressed. How about light bulbs? Change any light bulbs? Awesome. Very education.
Sure is. Thank y'all very much for y'all's hard work. I know it took a lot of work and a lot of time to get all that together, and Johnson Controls would like to thank y'all for y'all's important help with it also. So once again, thank y'all a bunch.
It was a pleasure. Thank you.
Can I borrow that dress? That is so cute.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to Subject C, our small acts of courage, which is going to be presented by our Bluestone Middle School students. And for all of you who were not able to attend, you surely missed a treat. So I'll let y'all go ahead with that.
Good evening, school board members. Better than to be able to stand up here and tell you, we've got a small and short video that we'd like to show you.
It's a cool crisp April morning. A Weston student has started her journey down a long dirt road to the bus stop. The buses aren't new and the rides are long. As she rides, she begins to daydream about her upcoming day. As they're traveling, the bus hits a bump in the road and she regains her focus. She can now see Weston in the distance. Much like today, the bus pulls around and parks to the left side of the school. The bus doors screech open and the students rush off across the gravel parking lot and head through the double doors. Once they enter, they can see the principal, Ms. Harris, greeting students as they walk in. The sounds of lockers opening and closing can be heard through the whole school as students get their supplies ready for class.
The seventh graders of Bluestone Middle School got a chance to interview some of our courageous members of the audience. To prepare for this day, we created questions inspired by our trip to the Moen Museum. We asked questions and took notes for two days. During those two days, we got to learn more about the Civil Rights Movement. After getting all our information together, we wrote an essay about what we learned.
Good morning. My name is Ronnie Jones. I would like to introduce Everett Burwell. He graduated in nineteen fifty-two from Weston High School. Mr. Burwell later entered the military and even participated in the march on Washington to hear Dr. Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech. He remembers carrying his son on his shoulders that day, a memory cherished.
Good morning. My name is Dale Sturifin. Mr. Burwell was greatly influenced by his father and his preacher. He was raised to follow his dreams. While serving in the military, he and some white friends went to a diner. To his dismay, the waitress brought out his white friend's foods on trays and his food in a paper bag and told him that he couldn't eat there. It was pretty funny, Mr. Burwell recalled. We, well, just walked out.
Good morning. I would like to present Ms. Anne Garnett Miller, class of nineteen sixty-seven from Weston High School. Even though Ms. Miller had old and new school supplies, she loved her school and feels that she got a good education because she had very good teachers and studied hard.
Good morning. My name is Keely Downey. I would like to introduce Mr. Glancy Spain. Graduating class of nineteen sixty-two from Weston High School. Growing up on a farm is not easy, but it does put a barrier against segregation. With the duties of the farm taking up most of your time, it is hard to experience other things like being separate but not equal.
Good morning. My name is Shada Tucker. Mr. Spain only became aware that things were unfair in his older years, but he did not let that stop him from focusing on his main goals. He knew that violence was all nothing and had no hate for any other races. He believed that we should be a good neighbor because we share the same earth, breathe the same air, have one sun that shines upon us, and walk on the same road together. Mr. Spain also taught us some valuable life lessons. He told us to always listen to our parents because his parents got him to where he is today.
Again, this was just a small portion of the show, excuse me, the program that we had on May second. And we were just so honored to have that night, that day, and have several members of the community present. And tonight, we asked Mr. Spain and Mr. Royster to come and just share their thoughts and experiences not only from the interviews, but from the program as well.
Thank you. Member of the Mecklenburg School Board, Chairman Preya, Superintendent Dr. Thornton. Bringing greetings from the Weston High School Alumni Chapter as President. We are seven full members strong. We meet monthly. And our main reason of existing is keep the name alive, scholarship we give each year, and fellowship. It was great that we were able to participate. And I'd like to thank Dr. Thornton for his encouragement and to allow this to happen. I'd like to thank Mrs. Shaw, the Chancellor. We met on occasion to allow that to come in her school. I'd like to thank Mrs. Heather Tuck for her day-to-day operation, meeting with us to make things go smooth. And I'd like to thank Mr. Mark Eckler and Mr. Todd Mueller for all the pictures that they reframed on the old one from nineteen fifty-two, some sixty-two years. They were fragile. They reframed them, new glasses, and they're on the wall in the new addition at Claushell Library along with the plaque. So thank you for the video that we went through with, the interviews. They were magnificent because going into the school, we saw a well-behaved amount of kids. My parents said, "Go to school, behave yourself, and obey the teacher." So we saw that. There are some awesome kids, students, that attend Bluestone Middle School, as well as what we saw tonight. We want to thank you for helping us keep the name alive, the location of the picture, to be interviewed by a lot of kids. We look like grandfather and grandmother to them. They were very respectable as they interview us because the history is something important. If we do not know where we came from, then we're not sure where we're going. Again, Dr. Thornton, thank you. Mrs. Shaw, thank you. Miss Heather, thank you. And Mr. Eckler, Mr. Mueller, thank you for the opportunity to work with Bluestone Middle School.
Again, good afternoon, everyone. I won't go through all the names. Spain had done a good job of that. But I just wanted to get a little bit of what he had said, and I wanted to bring greetings and thanks because I currently serve as the president of our National Alumni Chapter. We do have three chapters in Weston Alumni, National, which is local chapter of Mecklenburg. We have Metropolis chapter and also a chapter in Richmond. And I just wanted to bring you greetings and thanks from all of them for a job well done. I thoroughly enjoyed the little interview we had with her students over there, and they did come up with some questions. And it was a good task. And like I say, a lot has been done. I noticed in the presentation, a lot was done. And I had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Shaw and her staff about a year, working on this project, as well as the members of the school board and whatnot. And I think it was a great idea that she came up with to give us an opportunity to have a home that we could store our artifacts that we accumulated from nineteen fifty-three through nineteen sixty-nine. I myself was a graduate of Weston High School some forty-nine years ago. And it was great when my granddaughter, which is in the sixth grade, she says, "Papa, I saw your picture." You know, and I saw Grandma's picture too. But it was a great day, and the kids, they were so, like Spain said, they were so respectful. And we just had a nice time. I just wanted to bring you thanks from all of the chapters. Like I said, we thrive to do what it is to help young folks. Because like I said, today is very expensive to get an education. And so we do our little part and try to give scholarships every year to help those out that is trying to better themselves. And Mrs. Shaw, they did a beautiful job here and her staff. I don't know how I can thank her anymore. She put a lot of time with us, and everything just was beautiful and lovely. And I just want to thank you, the school board, and everyone that was involved that helped to make this a... They dedicated a wall to us, as you saw, with all our pictures on it. And that was a great thing because, you know, so many schools today don't have any idea where their pictures are. We are fortunate that we still have all our, and thanks to the people that did the reframing and all that, and they're all still intact. And so it's a lot there, and it just gave me a great feeling to see so many of those young kids recognizing their grandparents and parents from years ago. And because of how the idea had a little down, she said, "Papa, you don't look like you used to." But anyway, again, I'd like to thank you very much for all that was done, especially Mrs. Shaw, if you don't stare. So that they know that we, from all three chapters, appreciate everything that has been done for us at Weston High School Alumni. And thank y'all very much. Yes, sir. That project, I think, is still in the making. We did have trophies and some other artifacts that's at the school. And in the middle of that wall, Mrs. Shaw is, we are trying to work on a cabinet to show where we can store our trophies and what other artifacts we have that's locked away. So hopefully, sometime in the near future, that will... Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
One of our newest partners to our school division, Family Preservation Services. And Mr. Glenn Fokes, who is the Assistant State Director for this company, is here tonight to share with you a little bit about their company and the services that they're providing in six of our eight schools, or eventually will be providing in six of our eight schools. This is a wonderful opportunity to partner with local mental health professionals to support some of our students in staying in the community and stabilizing both their home placements and in particular, their school placements. It's free to eligible students, and it has been such a blessing already to many of our students and to several of our schools. I had thought that Mrs. Covington and Ms. Eisenhower were not going to be able to be here because they had a program tonight, but they were able to be here. And after Mr. Fokes presents a little bit about his program, I'm going to ask Ms. Covington to come up and share with you just a very, very brief reaction of what this has meant to her school and to those students that have already received some support from this company. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Glenn Fokes.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Thornton, Dr. Hackney, thanks for having us. Rob Rayborn is here with me. He's on our team. Out of what has really become a pretty big operation for us, Family Preservation Services is mostly across the entire Commonwealth, but our operation locally is an amalgam of mostly rural counties that start as far north as Buckingham and Cumberland and come all the way down to Mecklenburg, go as far west as the city of Danville, and then as far east, other than your county here. We do work in... We do work in, like Lunenburg, Nottaway, Amelia, some of the counties more easternly. So I appreciate your time. We can be very brief. You're getting a copy of our brochure that we give out as we go to schools and talk about the program in schools that we're not currently in. This is also a brochure that we give out to every family of any child who is referred to our program. As Dr. Hackney said, therapeutic day treatment is an amazing program. It's a Medicaid reimbursed program. It's, in some localities, it's possible that it could be funded in other ways, but in most of our rural counties, that's the primary funding source. If a kid meets the criteria, and typically, just to kind of give you a brief overview, your schools are the ones that typically would be making the referrals to us, you know, and opening the door and, you know, so we're not reaching any confidentiality issues or any other kind of personal issues. So once that door is opened between the school and the family to us, then my staff goes in, and there's, there's been an assessment done by the Community Services Board here locally prior to us going in, but we go in and then do our own more thorough assessment. And if, if the child is then approved, they begin in the program. As Dr. Hackney said, we were invited into six of your schools sometime, I think, back in the fall. The way we work is very slow and deliberate, slower than sometimes, I'm sure, the teachers and principals would prefer for us to work. But we've also found that that is probably the best way to work because we have pretty strict criteria regarding the quality of the staff we hire. As you know, in your endeavors to find qualified educators, we have the same problem in rural areas, finding qualified mental health professionals. However, we've been highly successful at that. We prefer to hire locally. I mean, people are usually happier if they can work closer to home. So that's another reason here, as we've begun this venture in Mecklenburg County, we've intentionally taken it slow. We're currently in four of the six schools that, that we could be in, and we currently have four counselors working with 18 of your students. These kids are, by, by design of the program, should be in some way considered high-risk. That could be a kid that is possibly intimately, very, very close to being put into maybe residential treatment, acute hospitalization, alternative school setting, a variety of things like that, that I think, as you know, most research shows that as soon as you take a child out of their home environment, even if it's dysfunctional in some way, typically more and more and more problems ensue beyond that, that we, as the system, sometimes help to create some of those ensuing problems. So if the program is run really well, it's, it's an amazing program. And, and we, we've had about eight to nine years of experience running therapeutic day treatment in some of the surrounding counties in the area I mentioned earlier. And in my experience, it makes the most sense to run it slow and deliberate because it's a program that can get out of hand. And you may have heard, I know other people in the room know of, of counties where the program ran like wildfire and then burned out real quickly, and nobody was happy with it. If it's run right, we promise you, we will run it right, that it will be a quality program that is beneficial to everybody involved. If it's not run right, you should run us out because we're going to create more problems and, you know, teachers and administrators will be the first people to tell you, you know, "Hey, we were doing better before you invited us in." So we are very aware of what a privilege it is to be invited into your schools and to be able to partner with you guys. It's a lot of ins and outs to the program. It's not the easiest to run, but once it's set up, it, it is an amazing, I cannot sing enough praises. We've, in other counties, found sometimes even situations where we didn't even realize the impact, such as like maybe with transportation, where we've had folks coming back to us and saying, "We don't know what you're doing, but we know that, you know, the referrals on this particular bus or this group of buses have really, have really dropped over the last few years." So I tell that story because we didn't know that was a good selling point, but if it works, then I'll tell it everywhere I can. And as, as I said, we want to hire locally as best we can, which, which means that, you know, you will see our advertisements at times in local papers. We typically now do much more advertising on the internet than we do in, in print, but we do all sorts of different things in order to try to find the qualified people to run the program. So with, with that said, I'm, you know, if anybody has questions for me or anything, I certainly would entertain those. Oh, yeah, you've asked me a lot of questions, so it's, it's, I cannot sing its praises enough. We have a full-time person that's committed to being our coordinator here in Mecklenburg. Even as small as the program is right now, we know where it could go. And her job is to really interface with the principals, take care of the referrals, conduct the assessments, and, you know, make, and then also to supervise the staff in your schools. And that's a critical part of the program, is that, you know, these people should be hired by us, trained by us, supervised by us, and yet fully respect the fact that they're in your schools and follow your rules and your times. And, and we want to look like we've assimilated as best we can just directly into your school system. So that's, that's our commitment to you guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Thornton, school board members. Dr. Hackney, thank you for asking me to speak. We are very fortunate to have family preservation in our school. We have one case manager, and she services six children in our building. And she provides a very valuable service, not only to our students, but to our parents. And some of the things that she's available to offer are things that are well beyond what we can offer in the school. And so, for example, she, she can make arrangements for intensive home therapy for not only the parent, but for the parent and the student to communicate with each other. She's currently serving six children in our building, and some of the children unfortunately have, have become on her caseload because they have moments of crisis. And we feel like that we need to do everything we can to keep them in school. And so this case manager just jumps right in and helps us with that so that we can change behaviors so that the children can stay at school. We are currently in the process of working with Dr. Hackney and the organization to organize a summer program where the entire school division will meet at my school, and we're going to provide transportation and lunch and so forth like that. And we're looking forward to hosting them at South Hill Elementary School. Any questions? Thank you.
Correct. Right. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's my pleasure to be able to work with you as your school attorney. And as we start this relationship, I think it's important for us to understand what is the role of the school board, what is the role of the superintendent, and what is the role of the school, school attorney in a, in a three-way relationship. And I think it's particularly fitting that we can do this in a community setting with the community here because a lot of the issues that arise come when the community brings concerns to you, and you're trying to determine what's the best way to handle them. So the more that the community understands what each of your roles is, the more effective you can be in those roles. So I'm going to spend a few minutes just walking you through the basics of what are the best practices between school boards and superintendents as they work together and the role of the, the school attorney. So the role of the school board under Virginia law is that the local school board is a body corporate, which means you're a, a group of people that work together as a group and can only act as a whole unless a duty or responsibility has been delegated or assigned to an individual board member or a committee of the board. No individual board member has any authority independent of the decisions of the full board. So that's the core fundamental concept under Virginia law, that when you are together as a board, that is when you have authority. The powers and duties of a board under the Virginia Code are, most importantly, to set local policy and regulations. You are the policymaking board, and the school board policies are the most important thing that you do. The, the code requires you to maintain fully accredited schools, to implement the standards of learning, to employ personnel, a function that you engaged in this evening, and to appoint and supervise the superintendent, not the other employees that you supervise. That's the primary supervisory role that you have. The code says that you secure by visitation or otherwise as full information as possible about the conduct of the public schools. But it's important to remember that to secure information does not mean to manage the schools. Management resides in the superintendent's office. Information and policymaking resides, that power and authority resides with the board. So the, the part of the activity that you've done tonight, having student and school groups come in and make presentations to you, is exactly what the code encourages school boards to do, and it's wonderful to see that happen in practice. Your job is to operate and maintain the schools from the policy level, to set the school calendar, and to provide insurance for the schools. Another specific power that you have under Virginia law is to hire legal counsel. You manage and control the funds of the schools. You provide free, appropriate public education to students with disabilities. That's a specific power and responsibility the school board has. You have the ultimate responsibility to discipline students when they come to you through the disciplinary process. And then you make the final decisions over matters concerning employment and supervision of personnel, but the code says upon recommendation of the superintendent. So you can't hire a person unless that person is recommended by the superintendent, but ultimately, it's up to you to decide whether or not to hire any particular person. That authority rests with the school board. Similarly, the superintendent has specific roles and responsibilities. The superintendent, superintendent is responsible for the day-to-day operations. So you set the policy, the superintendent's office executes that policy. The superintendent can make recommendations for policy and should do that. The superintendent will implement your policy. The superintendent will develop and have oversight of the budget. The superintendent has supervision of personnel and carries out all of the executive functions of the school system. So there's a balance here that we, that we've identified. There's a balance between the board setting policy on the one hand and the superintendent managing the district on the other hand. So as we mentioned a minute ago, personnel matters are managed by the superintendent unless they come to the board by a formal process, which often would be your grievance procedure. The board would bring criticisms, concerns, and problems to the superintendent. The superintendent acts to resolve the issues and to report to the board how an issue has been resolved. So for instance, if a member of your community had a concern and communicated that concern to you, it is not your responsibility to resolve that issue. It's your responsibility to report that issue to the superintendent, who then has the opportunity to resolve the issue and report back to you. Also, the balance has to, has to respect that board members who micromanage day-to-day activities are overstepping their authority, and that's where tension often comes in. Board members who act alone or in small groups overstep their authority. The board is a corporate body. You act as a group, not as individuals. Similarly, the superintendent needs to be responsive to board concerns so that the board doesn't feel like there's a need to micromanage. That's where the tension comes in, if the board doesn't think that the superintendent's office is appropriately dealing with, with situations. And we always recommend, as school attorneys, that the evaluation process and good and regular communications are the best way to avoid conflict. It's like a marriage. You've got to talk to each other and express your concerns and work those issues out as you go in order to avoid long-term conflict. The superintendent manages personnel. If an employee disagrees with a management action, the employee may file a grievance. You have a grievance procedure. Board members who get involved in investigating or advocating for or against a particular employee are no longer neutral and can't hear the case. So that's why we always try to encourage board members, if, if an employee comes to you with a concern, you can't get involved in that concern, or you can't hear the case later. You're not helping the employee by becoming involved. So in order, in order to not be disqualified, don't investigate or advocate, pass it on to the superintendent, and let the grievance procedure work. Confidentiality is a very important responsibility of board members. Board members have a lot of information that they receive in a confidential manner. It's a violation of the Freedom of Information Act and the federal laws. HIPAA is the healthcare law. FERPA is the Family and Education Records Protection Act for board members to share personnel or student information with anyone outside the board. You can't share information about individual students with anyone outside the board. Anything like that is a violation of state and federal law. So confidentiality is critical to the board member's operation. And again, the community needs to respect that. They need to not make demands on you to share information that's confidential information. What about operations? Well, it undermines the administration when board members get involved in operational matters. You then lose, you, the board, loses the ability to be in an oversight capacity if you're involved operationally. And again, the best way to have good communications is regular feedback and good evaluation systems. The superintendent reports to you, the school board. Everybody else in the school system reports to the superintendent. There has been a lot of research about what is good governance. How does a school, what, what is the difference between a good school board and a great school board? Because we want to be a great school board. So I'm going to share with you a few principles of really excellent governance. First, you want to be in a constructive partnership with the superintendent. Your effectiveness is interdependent on the superintendent. If, if the community doesn't perceive that the schools are going well, they blame the superintendent and the school board. If the community perceives that the schools are going well, they praise the superintendent and the school board. You rise and fall together. The best thing to focus on is mission. Do you have a vision for your school division? Do you have core values that everyone knows and that they respect? What do you believe in in terms of just the basic ethical principles of leadership? You want to allocate your board time to what really matters, and that is being strategic and setting broad goals and directions. Let the superintendent's office execute, but you set the goals. Another thing that sets apart really great school boards is that they have mutual respect for one another, and they have mutual respect for the superintendent. They engage in constructive dialogue, building, building dialogue to engage in shared decision-making. You, the school board and the superintendent want to make decisions that you both feel good about. You always put the needs of the division, especially the students, ahead of everything else when making decisions. The number-one criteria between what's a good decision and what is not is how does it affect the students? Not how does it affect me politically, or how's it going to get me votes? It's what is good for the kids? You want to promote an ethos of transparency. The community wants to know that the budget's managed carefully, that they can get answers to questions when they have them. answers to questions when they have them. Transparency is a mark of a great board. Uh, strong ethical values where you don't have conflicts of interest, uh, marks a great board. Uh, and a board that's results-oriented, that measures results objectively. It's not about our opinion about what's good and bad. It's about what do the numbers show? What, what, how are we doing on finance? How are we doing on test scores? How are we doing on getting kids to college? How are we doing on dropout rates? Those objective measures, uh, of success keep us focused on great results. What about the role of the school attorney? Where does somebody like me come in here? Well, the National School Boards Association has done a lot of work on this because one of the questions that people have is why can't somebody in the local community represent the school board? And the, the NSBA says, well, these are the things that you need to be looking at. Well, first of all, the attorney, the school board attorney, works for the school district and reports to the board. So you, the school board, are the client. Uh, but the school, the attorney works closely with the superintendent because a lot of the questions that come up do involve day-to-day operational questions and the superintendent needs advice. Uh, if there's a conflict between the superintendent and the board, the lawyer advises the board. Ultimately, the, the lawyer reports to the board. What about access? It's very important to clearly define who has direct access to the attorney. Uh, in most situations, that's going to be the superintendent and the board chair. Uh, no secrets. The board attorney cannot keep secrets from the board. There's not an attorney-client privilege except as runs to the board and to the employees that are acting in an official capacity. The lawyer, in order to represent the school board well, um, has to have the right facts and has to know what the questions are. And it, and that's the board and the district's responsibility to make sure that the lawyer is fully informed about a situation. Uh, one of the things that we in the law say is bad facts make bad law. If we have a situation where we don't have the facts right, we're going to give you bad advice. Uh, when we don't have enough facts, we'll give you bad advice because we didn't know something that might have made a difference in the advice that we gave. One of the questions that arises is should the school board attorney be present at meetings of the board? And in general, the answer to that is no. The key is for the board to anticipate what legal issues may arise and get advice in advance, or if it's a critical decision and you don't have the advice that you need, generally you can delay making a decision until the advice is obtained. Most decisions aren't so time-critical that they can't be delayed a bit, uh, you make sure that you have all the information that you need. What do attorneys do for school districts? They give legal advice or legal opinions. They do transactions, such as when you're buying land to build a new building. They'll represent you in litigation and hearings, like grievance hearings. Uh, they get involved in, uh, policy review and drafting, although generally using the VSBA forms because the Virginia School Board Association has excellent draft policies and we just help you customize them for your particular use. Uh, we work with training, uh, particularly in the compliance area. This session we're having right now would be such a training session. Uh, we do legal audits. For instance, uh, do you know that you're in compliance with your classified employees in the Fair Labor Standards Act? If questions arise, we can come in and do an audit on that question and give you a clear answer. Again, when you're selecting the attorney, uh, the reason you don't use, uh, a general practitioner, local attorney, is, uh, from the National School Board Association's perspective, is you want to have an attorney who has an intimate knowledge of education law and educational trends and issues, who can help you see where things are going. Uh, is the lawyer familiar with the court cases in the education arena? Does the, does the attorney know the State Department of Education regulations and who are the players at the State Department? And can the attorney go to court for you? Can the attorney handle court cases and hearings? These are the criteria that the NSBA say at a minimum, uh, a, a school board should hire an attorney who has these qualifications. Does the attorney inspire confidence in the administration and the board? Do you believe that that person is somebody who is giving you sound advice? Uh, is the attorney active in the Virginia and National School Boards Associations? Is the attorney accessible? You know, again, I, as I said earlier, accessible doesn't necessarily mean at the meeting, but it means can you reach the person by phone or email when you need them? Uh, and can the attorney make recommendations that result in smoother and more efficient operation for the schools? It's can, can, is it a person who can help you do your job better? So, uh, in conclusion then, uh, my vision of this relationship is that the board, the superintendent, and the school board attorney operate as a team. We're trying to work together. We need to be able to be cordial with one another and efficient. We will disagree about things, that's part of the business, but we can do it in a cordial and efficient way with good communications, with everybody understanding and respecting their role. Each of the three of us has a unique role, uh, and, and if we all carry out our roles, uh, in the manner that I just described, then we can, uh, help take a good school district and make it a great school district, which I know is what your goal is every day as you engage in your work. So with that, I'd be glad, um, for you to answer any questions or any further comments.
Is that online?
It is, uh, not online, but your tech folks have a copy of it, so it's available.
I just had a question about that first. I couldn't read the first screen.
Yes.
Before you pulled it off.
Okay.
Can I see that again, the very first one? The first slide?
Get it back up. Yes, right there.
Under powers and duties.
Yes. Oh, the first power and duty screen?
Yes.
Okay. Powers and duties.
Thank you.
This is the powers and duties of the school board. That's correct. Right. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Good evening, school board members. Chairman, Dr. Thornton, wanted to, um, propose to you the 12-month calendar. There has been a change. Um, the proposed calendar for 12-month employees has increased to reflect 20 holidays as opposed to 13 holidays. Along with this change, we are recommending a change in the annual leave policy to grant all employees one day per month, which would be 12 days per year. Employees would still be able to carry over a maximum of 12 days at the end of each contract year. This allows the buildings to be closed during December and spring break and it allows for more continuity with, um, the employees that are actively, they're not taking vacations all different times of the year. So we're all here at the same time and it allows us to close the buildings. So also to reflect that, you can see that the policy is highlighted to reflect those changes, um, on the, uh, current annual leave and holiday policy. Do y'all have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Will that mean the 12-month employees don't have to take leave when the teachers are off? Or are they going to take leave?
So they will take leave. They will have holidays and they will have the two weeks at Christmas and then they will have the week at spring break and then they'll have the other holidays that we typically take. Um, so it allows us to close the buildings, the schools, everything's closed down for those ti, those days.
And, and the reason I ask, I know a couple of times when school was shut down because of bad weather.
Mm-hmm.
Some of our 12-month employees still had to come to school.
Right. That is correct. And we still will. The 12-month will still report when, when accessible, when we can get there.
I, I guess my question is, eventually can we look into it that, when you talk about having a school open and it's almost the 12-month employees being penalized and having to come out in bad weather, can we look into 12-month employees being granted leave that's not chargeable to them?
That's something, I mean, definitely could be looked into.
Because I think it's unfortunate 12-month employees have to drive out to avoid taking leave, but if the school is shut down, it should almost be granted for them as well. I've always had a concern about that.
Well, I can, I can talk a little bit about that. Uh, tip, typically, it's if it's, if it's shut down, like the first day that snow comes in, we normally close for everyone. And then as it lingers in Virginia like it does on some of the back roads, as we get closer to, uh, opening again, two or three days down the road, we typically bring 12-month employees back in because they can perform their duties, whether it's in like the finance office or, or principals and assistant principals getting ready to reopen, maintenance getting ready to reopen, making sure the schools are safe. So, what we normally do is air on the side of safety and don't bring them in until it's safe for them to come.
Right. Just so they don't have to take leave and, and not, you know, put in jeopardy coming to try to make a school. If they can work from home, um, that will serve the same purpose, in my opinion.
Correct.
Any other questions about the 12-month calendar and the changes that are being recommended?
I've, I've got one.
Okay.
Form here we got, we go December 2014 to January 2014. Again, is that January 2015?
2015, yes. I think there was a mistake. Yes.
Am I looking at this right, that we're going to open up schools for one day, first week of January in 2015? On the second, am I looking at, I don't know, I'm not?
That's going to be actually, um, a workday for teachers to get, you know, coming back after the holidays, which they have requested. So, you know, they, they want to get ready for, before the students actually return and, um, they really like having that opportunity to come back and get their thoughts together before the...
Okay. I was just checking to see here, but I was just, I just finally got mine. Open up here, sir. I just had that question about that. So students won't be in school on that? That will be a teacher workday?
That's correct.
Mandatory workday or?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Okay. And the next one is requirements for the Affordable Health Care. Um, to effectively manage the requirements of health care reform, Mecklenburg County Public Schools, much like other employ, employers, recommend changes to the procedures for monitoring part-time and temporary employees. This legislation holds the potential for serious financial implications for the school division, including a pay-or-play mandate costing up to $2,000 per individual for failure to properly classify employees and properly manage the amount of hours part-time employees are working. This document is designed to communicate that it is the intention of Mecklenburg County Public Schools to remain in compliance and avoid any tax penalties. Um, and in the document, there are several things that I can highlight. Um, like many employers in school divisions, Mecklenburg County Public Schools has set 28 hours as the maximum that may be worked for employees not currently considered eligible for full-time benefits. We have established an annual look-back period, which is used to determine who meets the new full-time definition. Mecklenburg County Public Schools sets its annual look-back period as April 1st through March 31st annually. Changes must also be made to the school system's processes for hiring hourly employees, which will affect current part-time workers, bus drivers, car drivers, and substitute employees. That is, all Mecklenburg County Public School workers not currently under a full-time contract. This new process will require all schools to use RDA or another computer system to secure substitute teachers, short-term and long-term, so that tracking of substitute hours is monitored accurately through the division. Principals and directors are responsible for understanding and enforcing the limitations. Failure to follow the procedures will result in disciplinary action of those who violate them and those who authorize them. Part-time and temporary employees may only be assigned to one job. Bus and car drivers may not substitute and substitutes may not be a bus or car driver. The new Affordable Care Act requirements in particular have prompted the school system to monitor more closely the hours that bus, car drivers, and monitors work. The Transportation Department will be responsible for monitoring the hours of each bus, car driver, and monitoring to ensure that they do not work over 28 hours. I gave you some examples to look at as, as what we need to do to make sure we're following these requirements. Also, substitutes towards the bottom, subs, schools are required to maintain records for long-term substitutes and for short-term substitutes. Our policy will dictate that no long-term substitutes or short-term substitutes may work more than 134 days per school year. Substitutes may not hold part-time or temporary work assignment positions. Any questions concerning, it's just very important that we follow and maintain our part-time and temporary workers, that they're under 28 hours.
I have a question that comes to the bus drivers.
Okay.
We have bus drivers that sometime have to return to the, their schools to take care and back because parents weren't there. If they have to do this every day of the week, I know one bus driver that's gone it three times late in one week. That's going to put that bus driver over the 28 hours because of the distance that they live. How are we going to handle that?
I mean, it's going to be the responsibility of the transportation supervisor to monitor those hours and make sure that they're not, on an average, going over 28 hours. It is okay if one week they go over 28 hours, but on the average, and, and we want, in cases of emergency, that happens, but we don't want it to be a routine situation that, that occurs.
So it's an average, not...
It is an average, but we set 28 hours as our standard and so we follow that. But again, when we have emergencies, we have to take care of those situations. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Thornton, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Uh, I would like to apologize, I just realized that simply that I sent chairman for this, um, is dated 2013. This is for the 2014-15 federal consolidated application. Um, it is due to DOE on July the 1st, so this is for information tonight to be voted on next month. Um, you have the attached document. It is a fairly large document. Um, when you go through this, there are a lot of sections that don't even apply to us of programs that we do not get. Um, Title I, Title II, and Title VI are the three, um, programs in here that, um, have information attached to them. Any other area that you see that's blank, that is not something that we participate in. Um, so as you go through, it's an 80-page document, it's very similar, um, same setup as the last several years. Um, again, it's for information tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be, feel free to answer those tonight or if, as you're looking through it in the next month, if you have any questions, please just let me know. Yes? If you can scroll through and get down to page, I'll let you know the page number. Hold on just a second. When it starts on page 15, I believe, yes, page 15 does give a more detailed breakdown of each of the object codes. In the application, no, sir?
No.
Yes. Okay. The current year? Yes, sir, I can have that for you. Any other questions?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, Dr. Thornton. Um, I am here, it is time for the annual, uh, fuel bid. We've been doing it for years with, uh, seven other counties that I've listed for you. Um, we have placed the advertisement, we're bidding heating oil, propane, diesel, and unleaded gasoline. Uh, the ad has gone out. There's mandatory bid meeting, uh, at Charlotte County on June 4th. And then the bid opening is scheduled for the 11th. Just gave you a little blurb, uh, that we were down eight cents per gallon on diesel and five cents per gallon, excuse me, on unleaded gasoline against state contracts last year. Gave us a savings, about one load of fuel, about $25,000. So, my recommendation is, uh, that you vote to allow me to represent Mecklenburg County Public Schools at the opening and to accept the lowest qualified bid. And we do need a vote tonight. I'm sorry this, because of the schedule of the bid. And we do need a vote tonight, I'm sorry, this, because of the schedule of the bid, uh, I've got to be there on the eleventh. Any questions?
And Ms. Garner, when do you have to give them how much fuel we're gonna purchase?
Um, that will be, uh, issued on our website on the fourth of June. Really don't see much change, we ran out...
No, I mean, after you open the bid, when do you have to give the winner of the bid how much we're going to spend with them for the next year?
Um, well, I have to, on the, during the bid process, I have to tell them how many gallons I want to contract ahead of the opening. So then, they typically, the bid is for twenty-four hours, I've got to give them an answer, are we gonna accept the bids or not?
That's what I was getting to. You, we have twenty-four hours to turn this around, so what we're asking for is permission to commit to that, because the amount is gonna be well over thirty thousand dollars, which is the policy. So you need to give us permission to do that.
And then contracts will be issued and signed and approved, um, at the, I would think we would have them by the, the June meeting.
We, we have their amount that, uh, that they're advertising, uh, to give to us this year, and we're doing budget tonight as well, but that, that is in the budget. Again, we estimate it based on previous years and, and what we're hearing, and we've estimated that in the budget.
Any more questions?
Yes, I do. Ms. Tuck is gonna say it for a few words, sir.
Good evening. Um, recently I met with the Maintenance Department, and I shared with them our mission statement, which I'm gonna read again. To foster a culture of excellence, where proud students and educators become the craftsmen of beautiful quality work. And in order to become craftsmen of beautiful quality work, it does take time. And we've ne- one of the things that we decided, and that I decided under my direction, was to take our Maintenance Department and have an East End and West End team, so that they could become proud of their buildings, they could be, um, able to work within those assigned buildings, get to know the ins and outs and, and some issues that we have with our aging facilities. With that in mind, also beautiful work means lawn care, and our landscaping needs are quite great. Within the past month alone, um, we've had, you know, SOLs that we have to deal with and scheduling with that, we have award ceremonies, we have graduation, we also have, um, big lawn care needs. And with that needed, we realized that in order to facilitate our aging buildings and do the maintenance that's required to keep these buildings running effectively and safely for our students, that we needed to, um, outsource our landscaping needs. And that's what we have done at this time, to, um, put out an RFP, and I'll let Ms. Garner discuss that.
Okay, um, I issued two RFPs on April the thirtieth, they're both posted on our website, um, one for the West End, one for the East End. Um, requested bids be returned to my office, May fourteenth at two o'clock. We had the bid opening on May sixteenth, I have included, uh, information on the bidders, um, in your package, and I think that's the information I have for you that you already have. Um, we would like to recommend, to recommend that the school board members accept the offers of the lowest-cost qualified bidders, as outlined in the cost comparison, and we do need a vote again tonight, as, uh, the contract date would begin June first. Uh, if we don't approve tonight and decide to go forward with a, uh, contracted lawn maintenance, we would have to do reissue. Any questions?
You said you included the companies that, what their bids were in our packet?
Yes, sir, it should be, um, on the executive content. They came up this morning, uh, we, we opened the bids on Friday, and, uh, the team spent Friday analyzing, and I put together the presentation over the weekend because of the timeframe. Uh, we're trying to get it in by June first. They're all qualified, they've been through, um, our process, and it did happen that the lowest cost bidder is also the bidder that bidders that we are recommending.
I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, um, this came up as a concern, uh, from this board, also from the Board of Supervisors in the community, and you also heard from our own children's mouth, uh, we've got some issues in these old buildings that we need to take care of. The current staff, we have three people cutting grass all the time, and at this time of year, we have to add three more people, which leaves two to three people to take care of everything else in nine buildings. And it's an impossible task with buildings that were built in the fifties and sixties. And actually, they've been spending a lot of time in our newest building, in South Hill Elementary. So we have issues everywhere. So Heather, uh, as the Director of Support Services, put together a plan with her staff, so that we take these individuals and get them in our buildings, and provide a safe, healthy environment, and fix these issues in our building, and let someone else worry about the grounds. So this meets the, the criteria that we were looking for. And, uh, like I said, it's a, it's a way to get more hands in the building fixing what we need. And it's incorporated in my, um, budget as well.
Um, actually, uh, in, in most of the proposals, and definitely in the ones that, that we have chosen, they are very flexible, in fact, are willing to work on Saturdays and after-school hours if it is necessary during testing to get the grounds done without interrupting, uh, the children.
Which will be a benefit, because right now our employees know while our students are in school, because their, their work hours are the same as everyone else.
And we can have any more control over these employees, and we do, and sort of solutions that are in our schools, and some of them, I would take it after?
I, I would, um, think that Ms. Tuck would be working directly with, and, and also the contractors have all talked about wanting to work directly with the principals, um, to make sure that they are doing the concerns of actually all of the offers, they're like everybody else. They want to see our schools looking good, they want to be proud of the side that they're servicing, and I, I really think that, um, I, I think that we have a couple of good ones that, that would take pride in what, what they're doing.
Also, if you look in your RFP, it outlines exactly what they have to do, how many times they have to cut the lawn each month, and you can see in the months, uh, like December or January... And how many times they prune, how many times they weed, how many times they add mulch to our grounds, which, if you look at the number of times, we're not doing that currently with our staff.
As far as advertisement, was this advertised in the local paper?
Yes, sir, it was, uh, in the South Hill Enterprise for two weeks, and then in the Mecklenburg Sun for two weeks.
Okay, a lot of these companies, are they just local companies?
They are local companies.
The county companies?
Yes, sir.
Now, outsourcing the grounds maintenance. I'm looking at, I think the grounds, as far as the grass cutting, was done at one point by the, um, custodians.
I was not here, I, I have heard that, but I was not in this position at that time.
You, you weren't, and I know when we went in a direction of outsourcing that, which led to savings. Now, my question is, with the total amount that we're gonna be using towards outsourcing grounds maintenance, I would like to know the comparison. I know we had a savings, but I would like to know from that savings that we had for the outsourcing of the custodians, is that balancing out now with us now having to outsource for grounds work?
Um, I have not looked at that comparison, and this decision was not made for financial savings, it wa- it was made to have our grounds in great condition, and take our maintenance staff and, and put them in the buildings instead of our grounds. So it was not to add savings to the division at all, it was to put more people inside the building and fix our, our buildings.
Okay, and I guess we balance out the option of hiring additional maintenance people compared to outsourcing to someone else? Was that balancing the equation?
I, I think that's where we were. Uh, our, our staff physically cannot do the work that we need to do to get these schools in shape. So I think that this was a, a decision between more men and, uh, having someone that specializes in this qualified, and it put three or four guys out there and get it done for us, so...
We, we did, Mr. Sturtevant, and to answer your question, uh, we really need two to three people on both sides of the county to do the level of work that, that we want in that RFP, and so to keep our maintenance staff in the buildings and hire more to do that, uh, you're looking at, even if we said two aside, you're looking at four employees a- at a cost with benefits of about forty thousand dollar each, so that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Then you're looking at the upkeep of all of our equipment, and maintaining the lawn mowers, and, and providing the mulch, and, and doing all that, and that is far more expensive than the bids you have before you tonight.
Are we gonna be maintaining our equipment or getting rid of...
No, sir.
They'll be using their own equipment. We'll, we'll be keeping that equipment, and we still have, we still have in the budget, which, anything inside the ball fields is maintained by, uh, people who are paid a stipend to maintain our physical ball fields. So this is everything outside the ball fields, which is what our maintenance staff has maintained.
Okay, I, I just noticed that for everything we do, there's a cause and effect, and I, if you can send that to us, uh, just through email, what the savings were once we outsource custodians, are we depleting those savings now that we have to outsource, uh, for grounds maintenance?
Yes, this is an agreement, um, for Mecklenburg County Public Schools, buses to transport students to Holiday Lake, 4-H Center. Um, we had, we started this practice last year, and, uh, it's agreement between Virginia Tech and Mecklenburg County Public Schools to have three school buses transport youth to and from 4-H Camp from July fourteenth through the eighteenth, uh, to be held at Holiday Lake, 4-H Center, and App Matix. This agreement will need to be approved at the June school board meeting and signed by the Chairman of the Board and notarized by the Clerk. Please see the attached agreement. It's the same thing we approved last year, if you have any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Thornton, and Student Liaisons. My name is Crystal Crutchfield, and I'm the Food Services Supervisor. Tonight I bring before you information, for informational purposes, this Food Service Department's food bid for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. We advertised our request for proposals concerning school food, supplies, and milk, and bids were due back to our office April twenty-second. These bids were opened on April twenty-fifth. Included in the board packet was a worksheet that details each bid item, the case specification, and along with each vendor that bid, their unit price and case price. Also included was a column that listed the price that we are currently paying for these items this school year. The new bid pricing for next year is very competitive, and most items are priced lower for next year. Again, this is for informational purposes, and what I'd like to, um, vote for, um, next month. Are there any questions regarding the food bid? Yes. Well... We did raise our school lunch price for last year, uh, we are not having to do that for this year. Um, basically, when I came in, I went through all the seminars and went through the trainings, and I've put together variety in the menus, and by doing that and having a cycle menu, we know how many cases of what we need, and we give them a estimate, and that estimate is better contended for next year based on what it was, and the school bid, um, was rolled over last year. So we have a better idea of this year, what we're gonna use for next year. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to try to be brief. I went to the NSBA and also the VAS, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, and the theme again was around deeper learning, project-based learning, many sessions on that, no matter what state you're in, to take our kids to the next level so they can be successful, not just on state mandated tests but on SATs and skills that our employers are looking for. A lot of it was on breaking down barriers that constrain us, barriers that have existed for a hundred years in education. And one such thing that was brought up is the original reason why biology is taught biology, then chemistry, and then physics, is it goes in alphabetical order. And that is still the standard we use today. But that's how the decision was made a hundred years ago. So looking at those barriers, and again, we still are in the agrarian calendar, and we're still lined up in rows in the industrial age. So breaking down those barriers and wanting us to be courageous leaders and make those changes. And to be those courageous leaders, you have to have teamwork. I've asked my principals as we move forward through deeper learning to be courageous leaders. And what that means to us, and we've talked about that a lot, is do we want to be the status quo? Years ago, when the first round of SOLs came out, everyone in the state did horrible. And it was, public education is in big trouble. Well, as we figured out what they wanted to test our kids on, we got very good at it. And the majority of the state got fully accredited in all their schools. There were a few schools here and there that didn't make it for whatever their reasons were. And now we're in the state of new SOLs, more rigorous SOLs. And our governor, our state superintendent told us, we're going to decline. And we are. And our administrative team and our educators know that. But we also know if we do the things that DOE is telling us to do, that every school system is doing around the state now, we're going to get there again. We're going to move up, just like everybody else. But the question is, is that good enough? Are we going to only look at getting our schools accredited in those minimum standards from the state, or are we going to do things like you saw tonight? And have our students engage in authentic learning with our community and working on creative skills, communication, and the 21st century skills we want for our kids? So that's the question. I know the answer from my standpoint, and I know the answer from my principal's standpoint. And we need to ask the community, how far do you want to go? And so our question that our principals are working on, and their charge from me is, what do you want your school to look like? And they're researching this. I know we're doing deeper learning, project-based learning, but where are you going to take it? There's magnet schools, there are charter schools that do some fabulous things, and we saw these things. Can we get there? Why can't a public school do some of those things? And Mr. Taylor and some members of Chase City recently went on a trip with me to visit a school that's doing some pretty fantastic things in the area of music. And Mr. Taylor and his staff is doing some pretty fantastic things in the area of music with their violins that you've seen, and I think we've got an invitation tonight. And we want to expand on those opportunities. And we want to look at STEM, and we want to look at the arts, and we want to look at those things integrated in our regular day. And why can't a public school be a magnet school? Why does it have to be a charter school? What I saw tonight in those two presentations were the level we want to get to. But we want to get to there consistently each and every day. So that's the charge and the vision.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton and Ms. Tanner.
Again.
Thank you all for that. I also attended the NSBA. I don't have anything prepared like Ms. Tanner and Dr. Thornton did, you know me. But anyway, I attended two sessions that stood out. One of them was, don't let your attorney break your school budget. Thank you, Remington, Doc. And the second session I attended, and y'all will all appreciate this, was handling difficult school board meetings and members. So, and that's a work in progress, so we'll leave that alone.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. So we're going to move on to subject M here, our revised budget approval and information. Dr. Thornton?
Okay. Just to give you a quick background, we were trying to close the five million dollar gap that we've had in our budget from four years ago. And of course, you cannot close a five million dollar gap in one year. And the staff put together a budget proposal and asked the Board of Supervisors to fund a local increase of approximately two million dollars. And you approved that and it went downtown. They've worked hard on their budget as well, and they came back with a figure of five hundred seventy-four thousand and sixteen dollars in additional local funds and said they would still look at some more. They're talking about being revenue neutral because appraisals were down this year. They had another meeting just last week, and they've given the school board in their proposed budget another hundred fifty-four thousand for a total of seven hundred twenty-eight thousand and sixteen dollars in additional local funds. And this is greatly appreciated. And again, you can't close a five million dollar gap overnight without raising taxes quite a bit. But strategically, we need to keep moving in that direction. And it's hard to hold people accountable for the same results when you're working with far less people. In fact, one of the things they've asked me was, how many students have we lost over the last, since 2007? And I told them we've had declining enrollment, because they were wondering, how do you have declining enrollment? And some of our requests were for additional teachers. So I also sent them information, how many teachers have we lost since 2007? And the answer was one hundred. We've had one hundred teachers go, and we have had one hundred students. And we do not have a one-to-one ratio. So the numbers don't match, and data doesn't lie. So with that, though, now was a last-minute thing, this, at the end of last week, and all day today, actually, with my staff, of we asked for two million. So now, and we got seven hundred thousand, so now where do we cut from that original budget, one point three million dollars? And again, having to go through what's most important. And we didn't do this and ask people for their answer this week. Dr. Hackney's been working with all departments, collecting this information over the last three months, because we've been working on worst-case scenario. What if we don't have any money? What if we get X number of dollars? So all departments prioritized what was important to them and where we could cut. And so that is the budget in front of you tonight. And I printed off a hard copy because I know you like a hard copy better. And I will highlight, to get them, I'll highlight some of the cuts made. And in central office, there were nine positions cut. A diagnostician, three homebound teachers. And with the three homebound teachers, it's not a savings of all that money, because we have to pay someone by the hour to still provide those services, but it's still a good cost savings because you don't have to pay all the benefits. And if we hire, whether we have the homebound students or not, we have to pay those employees. So this is a better way to play, pay. So it's not a full savings of those three positions. You still have to keep money to pay for someone to go provide the services. An interet, early childhood special ed position from central office. The social studies coordinator is not being replaced. The maintenance supervisor. A finance clerk position, and the E-rate specialist is not being replaced. And there are other positions in the actual schools, and these positions are due to attrition where class size dictates that. So as Dr. Hackney has worked with principals and directors, they're looking at class size, does it meet K-three class size reduction, does it meet all the mandates from the state, and is there room to not fill a position through attrition? So with that said, all of these, all of these positions, except one, will go back into a classroom position somewhere in our buildings at no reduction in their pay. There's only one position that is lost due to the rift, and that is the maintenance supervisor position. Yes, but Ms. Tuck has reorganized, and she's built two teams. And in this budget, that's a good question. In this budget, she's identified two supervisors to lead the east and west team at a stipend of five thousand dollars each to lead those teams. And then they will communicate through Ms. Tuck. And again, those teams will be in our buildings working on actual maintenance needs. And let me add too, and we've also recently been working with Train in South Hill and have a, we've had a contract with them. We're going to continue that contract so that we make sure South Hill is working correctly. We've had Honeywell investigate the other schools where they've had equipment in our schools that have not been maintained since the early nineties. And we've brought people in to examine those, and we are looking at doing contracts with them to make sure our equipment is up and operational and that we're not putting band-aids on things. We are actually making sure they're working day to day. And some of the things, and I'll share that report next month with Honeywell, some of the things they've done, some of the problems that we have in heating, they've been manually overridden, and we paid in the nineties for all these computers to tell us what was wrong. They've all been manually overridden for years. To the point of some of the thermostats in the old buildings in the high schools and middle schools, someone has gone in and pulled the wires out of the thermostats. And in Honeywell's report, what they tell us is that when that happens, that room is reading fifty-eight degrees below freezing. So that is why in the stream of heat that goes through the building, we have the first few classrooms that are eighty degrees, when it's twenty outside, and the kids are taking their clothes off. And then down the hall, it's thirty degrees. And they're freezing and saying, Mr. Superintendent, why aren't we closing school? We don't have heat in the buildings. And so we are trying to correct all that with professionals and not people who are guessing. So that's all in the budget as well.
So just to be clear, you said that Dr. Hackney was, has been working with the department heads to decide where the cuts needed to be made?
Correct. They've emailed her those cuts, and she compiled those cuts. Those are what we use as a basis of our decision. And there wasn't enough cuts in those envelopes to get us the one point three, because no one really wants to cut their staff and so, or what they wanted. So there wasn't enough, so there are some further things that we need to talk to staff about and then inform them. But none of those positions will be lost. They'll be placed somewhere, somewhere else.
Any more questions? Ms. Shutterworth, we have anyone sign of public input? Going to move on to our action agenda? Move on to...
We're going to move on to our minutes from our regular meeting held March twelfth, 2014. Have a motion the school board approves the minutes from the regular meeting held on March twelfth, 2014.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? We have one who's absent, Ms. Shutterworth. Minutes from regular school board meeting, April twenty-second, 2014. Have motion the school board approves the regular school board meeting held on April twenty-second, 2014.
So move.
Kim, I'm having a little problem with the minutes. Could we attach the recording, the video and audio recording to these minutes when we vote on? Because if you go back and look at the audio, it's not saying as much type exactly. And I think some of those things that are said in these meetings need to be a part of the actual document when we vote on. Maybe we should ask our attorney to ask the boss. If the audio is real recorded, and what we say in these meetings is not reflected on the typed written page, and we vote on the typed written page, so should we type everything that we think is important on the typed written page and then adopt it? Or should we adopt the video with the written?
Right. Well, the minute should be a reflection of what is the motion that is approved by the board. You don't need the discussion to be a part of the minutes. It's just, what was the motion that was actually approved? That motion should conform to what person who moved said.
Okay. But no discussion?
Discussion does not need to be part of the minutes. All the minutes need to reflect is what did the board do?
Okay. That's going to be it.
Yes, sir.
Didn't Ms. Shutterworth take, didn't you get trained, you took training on the minutes, didn't you?
Let's read and I ask a question.
Let's read and I ask a question.
I'm in Florida, so I'm going to do what I'm going to do.
That's what I am, that's what I'm looking at.
On board, also, I have attached to you some acting. I have this on your screen on board.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
I wouldn't abstain, Ms. Shuttlerworth.
I was absent.
We'll move on to item C, payment of the bills. Have motion, the school board approves the payment of the bills.
Some of.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
One question?
Hold on just a second. I went over the payment of the bills. Ms. X was supposed to, she was unable to make it, so I went over them. I have, one that caught my attention, and I highlighted it, if I can find it. Ms. Garner?
Yes, sir.
We had two payments, or I caught two on here, that was to a paid software system for the same amount. I had a question about what, why we paid the same amount twice.
Yes, sir, that is the, can you hear me? That is the inventory system for the textbooks. There should be some half in the elementary purchase services and half in secondary.
All righty. And I had a question about, which I think, and I really figured it out what it was, but it was, we had a big expenditure, page 11, $2,030, $230,0230 to South Side Virginia Community College. I'm assuming that's our...
Yes, sir. Spring dual enrollment for Bluestone High School.
That's for Bluestone.
Yes, sir. We haven't received part views invoice yet.
We, Brown Edwards billed us for coming back and talking to us.
Yes, sir. I mean, they traveled from Roanoke, so that bill was a combination of their travel expenses and then the hours. We paid them hourly, and they gave us a break because it didn't take us long, and then we asked them to come back.
Under federal check 48926, AEI speakers bureau, Rick Womelley, Womelley, $7,000?
Yes, sir. That, and Tracy could speak to this a little better than I. It's my understanding, it is for some of the education, what school gets out.
It's what?
It's for speaking during the day of the year.
It's professional development for...
Professional development.
You want to have any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed?
I'm abstaining.
We had two opposed, and one abstained, Ms. Shuttlerworth. We're going to move on to subject D, our personnel. Have a motion, the school board approve the personnel agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? You in favor? None opposed, he was in favor. None opposed. We'll move on to subject E, VRS, 2% member contribution, Plan One, and 5%, and 5% for Plan Two. That the school board approves, VRS, 2% member contribution for Plan One members and 5% for Plan Two members.
Second.
Is that what the school board said plans are going to ask?
Yes.
Any further questions, discussions? All those in favor? None opposed, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Have motion, the school board, I say we'll move on down to subject F. Motion, we have motion, the school board approves to rejoin the VSBA policy services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This is going to be a full month, next, by next month.
I know, I don't know what the turnaround is on.
First, we have to think of the first, second, I think we're going to have, and so we have, it's a free school board, if you want, if everybody who's on school board wants a math board, do you ask them to access our policy?
Yes, ma'am, definitely. I don't think anybody wants to argue about that. We want to, we want to be able to access our policy.
And so that we will all have a chance to have an opportunity to access our policy.
Will we have a hard copy at least located here at Central Office?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll make a hard copy.
Okay.
At one time, we had one at East Library, so we could probably have access.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Have a motion, this is subject G. Have motion, the school board approves to suspend policy 1-5.4, which allows a vote to take place on the same night in order to allow a vote on Ms. Garner attending the fuel bid meeting and accepting the fuel bid on behalf of Mecklenburg County Public Schools.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? One opposed, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Have motion, the school board approves Ms. Garner attending the fuel bid, fuel bid meeting and accepting the fuel bid on behalf of Mecklenburg County Public Schools.
Some of.
Have motion, second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I think this is definitely clear that because of time restraints, we have to give this approval. It's no question. We don't have enough time, you have to make a decision within 24 hours. This is one of those appropriate positions where we have to go ahead and give authorization for it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
Abstaining.
One abstaining, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Have a motion, school, subject I. Have a motion, the school board approves to suspend policy 1-5.4, which allows a vote to take place on the same night information is held in order to vote on awarding the loan care contract.
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Opposed, and one abstaining, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Have a motion, that the school board approves awarding the loan care contract to, we need to have two names in there, I'm just going to put the two lowest bids.
Lowest East End, lowest West End.
Yeah.
Oh, she can say it, man.
What were the two lowest bids, Ms. Garner? The one for the West End?
Extreme loan care.
Extreme loan care for the West End? And the East End?
P and P.
P and P?
P and P.
Have a motion, the school board approves awarding the loan care contract to extreme loan care for the West End of the county and P and P contractors for the East End of the county.
Some of.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I know with the maintenance department doing everything they can do, it's hard on them to keep up with grass cutting. Because of the situation we're in now, I've heard from individuals within the community that says this would be a good idea. I will have to listen to the opinion of the recommendation from the people that are in place. So that's why I have to support it.
Any further discussion? I've got one clarification on that. The West End encompasses the Central Office, right?
Yes, sir.
And the Central Office on the West End, okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? One, we had two abstaining, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Move on to item K. Motion, the school board approves to suspend policy 1-5.4, which allows a vote to take place on the same night as information is held in order to vote on the revised 2014, 2015 budget.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion?
I'd like to have discussion.
Okay.
No, because of last minute, Wayne Carter, the county administrator, asked me to give them, because we're funded by categories, to give me, give him those numbers, and so that they could advertise in the newspaper. I gave him those numbers the best I knew at the, at the time by category, and I did send him an email, and Greg Gordon, who's the chairman of their finance committee, and told him that we need some leeway, because you had not approved it, and we were working on it. So these numbers do not match exactly what we're giving them by category, but we've asked them to come back and be able to resubmit the categories to them.
I have another question.
Okay, I tell, hold on, let's stick to, let's stick to this motion, to the motion of suspending policy before we actually discuss the budget. Is any more discussion on the motion to suspend policy? All those in favor? All opposed? Opposed, Ms. Shuttlerworth? Have a motion, the school board approves the revised 2014, 2015 budget.
Some of.
We have a motion and a second. Now, Ms. Garner?
Now, the state has not adopted their budget. And does that affect what we're sending out to the board's policies?
It's a great question. We have given, we have used the number from the governor's proposed budget. All of them are fairly close, and in, some categories may switch if they ever adopt a budget, but we feel, we're, they're close enough that we could move within line items i-if anything affects it like that.
And did a question, does this affect the teacher contract since we don't have a budget? Call it a third and S.
That's a great question for our new attorney. Well, we have mine on the clock.
I'm really going to stick my neck out now. We've been getting this question a lot, as you can imagine, because every school board in the state is in the same boat as you, because the state budget hasn't been passed. There seems to be enough, as Dr. Thornton said, there seems to be enough confidence at the county levels that the state is going to fund at the levels that they're projecting that counties are going ahead and approving school board budgets. Once the county approves your budget, you can issue contracts. The county has enough money to fund your budget for a while, even without the state money. So if there's a delay, then at that point, you could still, you know, you can get in, you can do your July payroll, for instance, using county funds. Eventually, the lack of state funds would catch up with you, but not at first. And so in the standard form contract, and we want to make sure this language is in your contracts, but in the standard form contract, there's a clause that says that the contract is contingent on the availability of funds to fund the contract. So if the money ultimately were not to be available, and nobody really believes that's going to happen, but if that were to happen, you've got a savings clause in your contract that allows it. So the school board attorneys across the state are advising the boards, once you've got your budget approved and the county approves it, you can go ahead and issue those contracts, even though the state hasn't approved its funding yet, with the understanding that if the state funding does come in lower, you're probably going to have to go back and adjust all that.
Any more questions? Here, not, all those in, all those in favor? All opposed? All righty. We're going to move on. Mr. Thornton, do you have another item you want to add on the action?
Yes, sir, I have a motion.
Okay.
The motion that I have is going to be in reference to, well, mainly to come up for next month. The girls' soccer team at Bluestone Middle School was exceptional this year. They went undefeated. This board, two years ago, voted for an opportunity for these girls to have an opportunity to play. At the middle school level, we have a coed in the fall and all girls in the spring. I would like this board to consider having an all-boys team as well as an all-girls team, if schedule would permit, to play in the fall. That way, we'll give that equal opportunity with the boys and the girls at the middle school level.
All right. I thought when they look into it, we'll bring something back to us next meeting on it.
Great.
Is that okay, everybody? Before I leave, I have an envelope I need to give you all for our evaluations, our evaluation forms, our other instrument with our CD or whatever. That didn't, that didn't pan out. I think the VSBA gave some wrong information in one of their meetings about it, so we're going to use our existing tool we have, and we'll implement the new procedures next, for next year on that, as long as we get our evaluation done, Superintendent, by July the 1st. That's on here, I've got the package right here. We have, is it tomorrow night, we have the spring forum? One, don't forget the spring forum tomorrow night at six?
Five.
It's at five, I'm sorry. It's at five at South Hill Elementary. So for all of us on that, and if anyone wants to say anything else, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. I mean...